Thank you. Now it is time for the board to consider the candidates that are in Tier 1, Tier N3, as indicated and provided. And President Feaster, I'm going to turn it over to you, but I will be sitting here in case you need any questions answered.
Thank you so much, Dr. Shivers. Trustees, we have received information from HYA on their vetting process. We have candidates in Tier 1, 2, and 3. At this time, I would accept a motion that we no longer consider the candidates in Tier Number 3. Is there such a motion?
I move.
I support.
Moved by Trustee Schmidt, supported by Trustee Gainer. Any discussion? Trustee Baskett?
So, with the board's support, I would like to consider candidate, moving candidate 18 off of Tier 3. But I understand if there's no support.
And trustee?
What was?
Candidate 18 from Tier 3 to Tier 2. That is the comment, I believe.
Oh, it's Tier 2?
Well, actually, I might as well jump all the way. Forgive me, trustee. President Feaster, might as well take the leap and move, propose to move candidate 18 to Tier 1A.
Right.
I would support.
Okay.
Hold on.
Sorry, Ms. Osinski.
Is there, okay, so is it an additional motion to? I have it. So there's an additional motion to move candidate 18 to Tier 1?
Yes.
Okay.
1A.
And that was 1A. And that was trustee Baskett, supported by?
Trustee Mohammed.
Mohammed. And any discussion on that?
Any discussion? Ms. Osinski, please.
Trustee Gainer?
No.
Trustee Baskett?
Yes.
Trustee DePree?
No.
Trustee Mohammed?
Yes.
Trustee Schmidt?
Yes.
President Feaster?
No.
Motion fails.
Any other?
So now we're back to moving the?
Tier 3.
From Tier 3 to not consider.
Correct.
And we need to discuss and vote on that.
Thank you, Ms. Osinski. Any other discussion around Tier 3? Okay. Was there a motion to eliminate Tier 3, and what's your support? I believe there was.
I made the motion originally. And did you?
And trustee Gainer supported it. Okay. All right, Ms. Osinski, please.
Trustee Gainer?
Yes.
Trustee Baskett?
Yes.
Trustee DePree?
Yes.
Trustee Mohammed?
Yes.
Trustee Schmidt?
Yes.
President Feaster?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay, now we are into Tier Number 2. Trustee Baskett, please.
President Feaster, with the board's support, I move to move candidate Number 2 from Tier 2 to Tier 1A.
Okay. Is there support for that?
I'll support.
Trustee Mohammed supports, excuse me, trustee Baskett moves, trustee Mohammed supports. Any discussion around that? Trustee Gainer?
Yeah. I feel this person has been in too many positions in too short of a time, and I'd look for somebody with more stability and persistence.
Any other discussion? Trustee Baskett?
Yes, if you have read through the documentation, one of those moves is to move due to ill parents. And for those of us who have taken care of our parents, to me, that was a legitimate reason for some of these moves. The other moves, of course, were to, again, advance oneself and one's career. And again, I would support that. I think the candidate has done some outstanding work, including the promotions of 9th graders for 4%. And again, I think it's worth the conversation to have with this candidate.
Trustee Gainer?
Yeah, understood. And I was impressed by much of what he did, but you were talking about one good reason understandable. He's been in 16 different districts over the last 34 years, 33 years. And, you know, it's fine. I understand your reasoning.
Understood. Any other discussion? Trustee Baskett?
I would challenge the number of districts, but?
Okay. Any additional discussion? Okay, Ms. Osinski, please.
Trustee Gainer?
No.
Trustee Baskett?
Yes.
Trustee DePree?
Yes.
Trustee Mohammed?
Yes.
Trustee Schmidt?
Yes.
President Feaster?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Are there any other candidates in Tier 2 that we would like to have considered? Trustee DePree?
A motion that we move candidate 14 to Tier 1A.
Tier 1A?
Yes, Tier 1A. Is there any, is there support for that?
Sorry, 14?
Yeah.
So DePree, and who supports?
No support yet.
Okay, sorry.
Is there any support to move candidate 14 to Tier 1A? Okay, hearing none? I believe that fails. Any additional discussion on Tier 2?
I move to vote on removing that list from consideration.
Thank you. There's support moved by trustee Schmidt, supported by trustee Baskett. Any other discussion around that? Okay, Ms. Osinski, please.
Trustee Gainer?
Yes.
Trustee Baskett?
Yes.
Trustee DePree?
Yes.
Trustee Mohammed?
Yes.
Trustee Schmidt?
Yes.
President Feaster?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay. So now we are into Tier 1, and I believe this is the point where Dr. Shivers, we're going to just go down and?
Candidate.
Okay. All right, so we will start with candidate Number 1 and Tier 1.
President Feaster, may I make a recommendation that either myself or either you, very briefly for the public, delineate the difference between Tier 1, 2, and 3?
Please, would you please, Dr. Shivers?
I should have done that beginning, so I apologize. Tier 1 are those candidates, the top candidates, that best fit the district's leadership profile. They had an exceptional reputation. Many of those candidates are currently superintendents or in top-level leadership positions like Assistant Superintendent, Deputy Superintendent. These candidates overall had the highest recommendations and support for their candidacy for superintendent in Ann Arbor Public School District. Tier 2 candidates were good candidates, but they simply were not as qualified as Tier 1. They may not have had unique or as many experiences aligned to your leadership profile. They may or may not have had superintendent experience. If they did, it may or may not have been brief. And in some cases, these candidates may have had some negative situations or reasons in which they left their previous employment that kept them in not being the top tier, but still should be considered, asked questions, and garnered some more information about their background and their experiences. Essentially, Tier 2 candidates were good. Candidates may not have been the best fit. Tier 3 candidates were candidates that were not good for the district. They were not as strong as Tier 1 or Tier 2. They may have had some significant issues in their background, either through reference check or through background check. They may have had reasons of concern for why they have left their previous job. They may or may not have been qualified or had the right experiences. And some in Tier 3 did not meet the deadline in which their application was received. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Shivers. Okay, I believe we are at Tier 1A, and I've been told that the best way to do this is to go straight down the list and start to vote on each candidate.
And report to them by number.
Thank you. In Tier 1, we have candidate Number 1. Is there, do we just discuss?
Yep. Motion.
Okay. Trustee Baskett?
I support that we invite candidate Number 1 to be interviewed.
Thank you.
Second.
Supported by trustee Schmidt. Any discussion around candidate Number 1? Okay. Then Ms. Osinski, please.
Trustee Gainer?
Yes.
Trustee Baskett?
Yes.
Trustee DePree?
Yes.
Trustee Mohammed?
Yes.
Trustee Schmidt?
Yes.
President Feaster?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. We are down to candidate Number 4 in Tier 1A. Is there a motion for candidate Number 4 in Tier 1A? Is there a motion to remove candidate 4 from further consideration?
I'm not sure yet. Go ahead, too. I move that we remove candidate Number 4 from Tier 1.
Is there support for that? Trustee DePree supports. Any discussion? Trustee Baskett?
Thank you. While Tier, I'm sorry, candidate Number 4 comes with a lot of great qualities, and I do appreciate HYA doing the homework for us. I just figure the district size is an issue as well as the budget. It's substantially less than what we are currently dealing with. Fewer children, fewer issues, possibly. We would just, I think, be a challenge compared to the other candidates, and we do have some very fine candidates from larger districts.
Thank you, trustee Baskett. Any other conversation around that? Trustee Gainer?
Yeah, I agree. I had him on my, I had him on my yes list at first, but it's a matter of numbers, I think, at this point, and this district size is an issue.
Thank you, trustee Gainer. I actually had candidate Number 4 on my list as well, but I understand the concerns of the trustees. Any other discussion around that? Ms. Osinski, please.
Trustee Gainer?
I'm sorry, what's the motion, please?
To remove Number 4 from Tier 1A.
Okay, thank you.
From consideration.
Yes.
Interview.
Yes.
Yes. Trustee Baskett?
Yes.
Trustee DePree?
Yes.
Trustee Mohammed?
Yes.
Trustee Schmidt?
Yes.
President Feaster?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Moving down to trustee, excuse me, moving down to Tier 1A, candidate Number 7. Is there a motion for candidate Number 7? Trustee Gainer?
Yes, yes, I'm sorry. Yes, sorry. I move that we consider candidate Number 7 for the position.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Moving down to Tier 1A, candidate Number 10. Is there a motion that we continue to consider candidate Number 10?
I motion.
Trustee Mohammed motions?
I support.
Trustee Gainer supports. Any discussion around candidate Number 10? Ms. Osinski, please.
Trustee Gainer?
Yes.
Trustee Baskett?
Yes.
Trustee DePree?
Yes.
Trustee Mohammed?
Yes.
Trustee Schmidt?
Yes.
President Feaster?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Could I move, could I, could I suggest we move just a little bit more slowly?
I agree.
Apparently, I wasn't responding because I'm thinking of too many things at once. So we're doing great, but we need a little more think time, I guess.
I can be a little more deliberate. I apologize.
No, you're doing great.
Follow the list, trustees. Follow the list. Next one is Number 3.
All right, now we are at Tier 1A, candidate Number 13. Is there a motion? Trustee Baskett?
I move that we consider candidate Number 13 to be interviewed.
I don't think that's what exactly we're at, myself.
I'm trying to give you all.
Some of us are more liberal than others.
Thank you, trustee Baskett, for moving.
You're welcome, sir.
Is there support for trustee Baskett? Trustee Mohammed supports. Is there any additional discussion?
Now, this is where we pause.
I'm trying.
This is where you don't go so fast. It's like, wait a minute. Okay. It's like, that gives us a chance maybe to pull up that file.
No, you should have done your homework, trustees.
I know, but, you know.
We've been working on this for how long now? Come on. Get your Excel spreadsheets together.
So we are still at Tier 1A. There is a motion on the table for candidate 13. There is support. Is there any?
Call the question.
Additional discussion?
No, 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 don't say that.
Oh, no.
Is there any additional discussion around candidate Number 13?
I'm good.
Ms. Osinski, please.
Trustee Gainer?
Yes.
Trustee Baskett?
Yes.
Trustee DePree?
Yes.
Trustee Mohammed?
Yes.
Trustee Schmidt?
Yes.
President Feaster?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Ms. Osinski, how many candidates do we have? Have we approved?
4.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, we are now at Tier 1A, candidate Number 16. Trustee Mohammed?
So I motion to remove candidate 16.
Okay. Is there support for trustee Mohammed's motion?
I support.
Trustee Gainer supports trustee Mohammed's motion. The motion is to remove candidate Number 16 from further consideration. Is there any discussion around the motion? Trustee Baskett?
I would like to hear more from the candidates for, I'm sorry, from the trustees for removing this candidate.
Oh, I'm sorry, trustee Mohammed?
So I think, just looking at, just without giving too much away, but looking at the district, the size, the experience, that's the reason why I would recommend removing candidate Number 16. It's not going to be, it's not comparable. I know we're not looking exactly comparable, but it's not comparable to ours.
Trustee Baskett?
I mean, one of the, so this candidate has, if I counted correctly, 12 years in this particular position. This candidate's done some outstanding work in terms of suspensions. It sounds very creative, and again, student conduct has been a concern of ours. And again, 20%, oh, I'm sorry, of the district's new hires in the past three years being educators of color, I'd like to know how this candidate did that.
It might be, it might be worth an interview so we can understand, and maybe this is one of, we know that all candidates, many candidates start in smaller districts and will move up. That's part of the normal progression of a profession. So maybe it's worth, because of the good work, letting them explain to us.
Trustee Mohammed and trustee Baskett?
So I try to look, I'm looking to try to compare again, looking at from a comparable district as far as like diversity and socioeconomic, and there's, there's definitely differences, but not significant difference. So I just feel like it's important to have, have someone that actually has experience in a similar, in some ways, of our district when it comes to socioeconomic, when it comes to diversity. It is diverse, but it's, there's some differences, but that's it. I mean, not that, I mean, I can live with this candidate, but I'm just, just my, my.
They're all great candidates, but we're piercing now, so we have to try to make some decisions. Fair. Trustee DePree?
I think it's important that this particular candidate has actually led their district through a very high-level construction project. To me, that's similar to the bond work that we do, so that kind of stood out as well.
Any additional discussion? Ms. Osinski, please.
So the motion is to?
Remove candidate Number 16.
Remove, okay.
Just making sure. From consideration. Trustee Gainer?
Yes.
Trustee Baskett?
No.
Trustee DePree?
No.
Trustee Mohammed?
Yes.
Trustee Schmidt?
No.
President Feaster?
No.
Motion fails.
Is there another motion regarding candidate Number 16?
So this, I'm sorry, President Feaster, so this requires, in order for this candidate to be considered, we then have to go the other route. So I move that we invite candidate Number 16 to be interviewed.
Second.
Moved by trustee Baskett, supported by trustee Schmidt. Is there any other discussion around that? Seeing none? Ms. Osinski, please.
Trustee Gainer?
Yes.
Trustee Baskett?
Yes.
Trustee DePree?
Yes.
Trustee Mohammed?
No.
Trustee Schmidt?
Yes.
President Feaster?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. We are now down to a Tier 1A, candidate Number 19. Is there a motion as it relates to candidate Number 19? Trustee Baskett?
So President Feaster, with my colleague's support, I will move that we invite candidate Number 19 to be invited, to be interviewed.
Okay. Is there support to invite candidate Number 19? Seeing none? Is there another motion? I move that we remove candidate?
Okay, so there was a question. Go ahead and ask a question.
Yeah, how many do we have so far? Sorry, can't keep track.
So, so, and let's just make sure we're clear.
5.
We're going to go through the entire Tier 1, and if we get to a point where we have more than we're able to, to handle on the 16th, then we'll readdress and change those numbers accordingly.
So we can have more to start with, like if we get 9, and then say, now let's win it at another level, right?
Right.
Because otherwise, the poor person that's at the bottom of the list, you know, they're like out.
Yeah, correct. So, all right, so.
I recommend that you go through the entire list, even if you have more than the desire to state numbers.
Give it a yea or nay.
And then somebody can make a motion to eliminate another candidate in that.
Oh, that's true. Right, yeah.
So, I move that we remove candidate Number 19 from Tier 1.
From consideration.
From consideration. Any discussion around that? Trustee Baskett?
I just raised the question, President Feaster, why would you support removing this particular person who was nominated as Superintendent of the Year?
My per, well, without trying to get into any details, I'm, I'm concerned about the geographic location of the candidate and how that candidate will translate, transfer to this community.
Hmm, okay. I don't think you're being fair. But I, respectfully.
No problem. We can, we can, no problem.
I will say, when I look, you know, our number one job as a board, and what we will direct our superintendent to do is to see increases in achievement.
Correct.
And this person has some numbers to support their work.
They do.
Which you don't see that very often.
They do.
That's big.
Well, trustee Baskett?
I would also add that this particular candidate has launched some unique partnerships, some that I would envy and possibly like to replicate here in the district.
Any other, well, any other discussion?
So you had suggested removing the person, and did you get a second?
Trustee Mohammed.
Oh, okay.
And don't get me wrong, I think the candidate's a great candidate.
I respect him.
Okay. No, saying nothing bad about the candidate.
We don't need any hate mail, Dr. Shivers. We got enough going on.
But we're trying to come to, we're trying to thread a needle here and get to a number. And so this is one of the candidates that I am comfortable removing. All right, Ms. Osinski, please.
Trustee Gainer?
Yes.
Trustee Baskett?
No.
Trustee DePree?
No.
Trustee Mohammed?
Yes.
Trustee Schmidt?
Yes.
President Feaster?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay, we are now down to Number 2, Tier 1A, candidate Number?
No, Number 21.
21.
He's still in 1A, yeah.
Is there a motion related to candidate Number 21? Trustee Schmidt?
I would move to remove his name for consideration.
There's support? I'll support.
Can you give me a minute?
Yes, sorry. I'll slow down.
This is where, candidate 21, correct?
21, yikes.
I'm sorry. Too many notes.
Okay. I'm, I'm good. All right. Trustee Mohammed?
So is there a reason to remove? What's the reasoning behind removing?
Hold on a minute, let me?
Okay, candidate 21.
Yeah.
Well, the person who brought the motion should be able to address that.
Well, I'm doing that, so.
I know, pointing at her.
I'm looking at my notes, just, aw, you put the pressure on me.
I'll be glad to speak now that I found it.
Be ready to defend it.
Trustee, trustee Gainer?
The districts are very small and a little bit above, not as important that the geographic location, but I think it's most, for me, it's mostly the small size of the district.
I was looking at size. I mean, there's some good numbers. Once again, you know, I'm looking at achievement, and that is good. I could probably go either way, but that transferring from a very, very small total district, I mean, we are, we've got a lot of things going on here that have to be attended to.
Trustee Baskett?
So this particular candidate was a maybe on my list. I acknowledge the size of the district, but I do acknowledge, as trustee Schmidt, you just have student achievement gains every five years. I mean, that, that's commendable. And I will say, I thought it was a very nice cover letter.
Yeah, beautiful.
You know, I thought it was good work. So that's what got this person to the possible list.
I'm going to, I'm going to pull back my motion.
Okay.
Oh, I'm confused now.
We got to stir this up a little bit. Come on.
Well, we are laughing for the first time in how many weeks, so.
This is like a kumbaya moment.
All right, so trustee Schmidt has withdrawn her motion. Is there another, trustee Gainer?
I won't move that we withdraw this candidate.
Trustee Gainer is moving that we remove candidate Number 21 from addition, further consideration. Is there support? I will again support. Is there any additional discussion? Trustee Mohammed?
So I know also, I try to look at like the, I know it's a small district, but it's not, I mean, it's a smaller district than ours, um, but I do appreciate, it is a diverse district, um, especially from a socioeconomic standpoint, um, it's a strong district, um, so I would, I would support keeping this person on.
Okay. So, m- my concern is, I believe this is the candidate, uh, that I had concern about the length of time that they may, may be willing to or able to serve this community. And for that reason, and that we're trying to thread this needle, is why I am suggesting we remove candidate 21.
Really?
Yes.
Oh. Okay.
Any additional discussion?
No, I mean, I think that, um, the size of the district actually really does matter here because it can be a strong district, but it's smaller than ours, so the metric would be a lot smaller than the ones we measure.
All right, if there's no more discussion, uh, the motion is to remove candidate 21 from further consideration. Ms. Osinski, please.
Trustee Gainer?
Yes.
Trustee Baskett?
Yes.
Trustee Dupree?
Yes.
Trustee Mohammed?
No.
Trustee Schmidt?
Yes.
President Feaster?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. We are now down to-
Number two.
Number two, yes, thank you. We are still in tier one A, we are at candidate number two. Is there a motion as it relates to candidate number two? If you recall, candidate number two was moved from tier two to tier one A.
Oh, that's the-
Okay. Is there a motion a- as it relates to candidate number two? Trustee Baskett?
So I move that we invite candidate number two to be interviewed.
Is there support? Trustee Mohammed supports. Is there any, let me, let me- Is there any additional discussion?
I want to check, I want to check some information that I think we got from the briefing beforehand, so if I could have 30 seconds.
Please.
Ms. Shivers, can I, can I ask if, um, this candidate is serving in the position that was stated in the application to the best of your knowledge?
Um, this candidate is not serving in the position that is indicated on the resume currently.
All right, thank you. That and along with the very brief and very, very brief tenure, and to me, too many districts, gives me pause.
Trustee Mohammed.
So I did notice, I do appreciate that, um, this candidate has like also special ed, um, experiences, and that's pretty unique, um, so especially when it's a need here too.
Thank you, Trustee Mohammed. Any additional discussion? Trustee Dupree?
I'm looking at the professional development of candidate, um, particularly, I don't know how, I say, what-
Pipeline development, maybe?
One second.
Pipeline development, developing a pipeline-
Yeah, yeah.
Of leaders.
Mm-hmm. Because, yeah, it's a couple of very specific professional development, uh, courses that this candidate has completed that kind of stands out to me, that's different than the other.
What's interesting about this is there are no numbers of dis- the districts that this person served in.
The, the district is fairly large, um, I can't say that I got it from that material, but-
All right.
What I also appreciate about this candidate is this candidate has experience working in the community in terms of centers, community centers, and the partnerships that this particular candidate, um, you know, has, has developed. Now, I will say, I understand there are some reservations regarding this candidate, but again, doesn't hurt to invite this candidate, this candidate may turn us down.
Yes, Trustee Mohammed.
And definitely something that stood out, it is, you know, this candidate was in a huge district, in a very diverse district, um, so I think, you know, it would be, and the experiences of this candidate's strong, so I would think just giving this candidate a chance, at least to interview.
So, this, this, uh, is kind of the opposite of, of the reason why I wanted, did not want to interview the other candidate was the geographic location. I thought this candidate, I know Trustee Gainer thinks it's somewhat of a negative, I like the fact that this candidate has lived and worked in a variety of different communities, and has worked with different kinds of people. Our community is a community with different kinds of people from everywhere, and I kind of like that about this candidate. So I'm interested in actually speaking to this candidate. Trustee Gainer.
The district he's, the district he states that he's at now has 41,000 students.
I said a large district, did I not?
Yeah, good, thank you for the information.
That is the concern, though. Yes. Any additional discussion? Okay, then, I believe there's a motion to invite candidate number two for an interview, it's been properly supported, Ms. Osinski, please.
Trustee Gainer?
No.
Trustee Baskett?
Yes.
Trustee Dupree?
Yes.
Trustee Mohammed?
Yes.
Trustee Schmidt?
Yes.
President Feaster?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay. We are on to tier one B, excuse me, yes, one B, uh, we start with candidate number 24. Is there a motion as it relates to candidate number 24? Is there a motion either way as it relates to candidate number 24? Trustee Mohammed.
Anything?
I'll motion to, um, not consider candidate number 24.
Thank you, Trustee Mohammed. Is there support?
I'll support.
I saw, I saw the hand of Trustee Baskett, but I heard the voice of Trustee Gainer.
We're not gonna argue over this.
All right. Uh, Trustee Gainer supports. Is there any additional discussion?
Well, like somebody did to me earlier, no, um, so, give me the reasoning behind removing.
I'll go first.
Okay.
So I, I was, this candidate seemed very strong, but there was just, I, I questioned the finance experience of this candidate, that was not clear, um, I saw the line proficient management of a budget under a particular funding, but again, it was not clear if this particular candidate had helped generate any revenue to their district. I also thought the, now, I did appreciate the CTE experience, um, but I thought the candidate was a little sloppy in terms of the candidate's cover letter, and if you look at the letter of references, it refers to another district, not us, and while candidates do apply to multiple districts, I do appreciate that, but it's up to the candidate to double check the details of the items submitted on that candidate's behalf, and I just, attention to detail is very important, and again, we have other candidates who were strong and more careful in their submissions.
Thank you.
To, to your point, we are trying to thread that needle, I do like this candidate's , uh, work with equity, but I do definitely understand your concerns. Any additional, uh-
That was very helpful, thanks.
So hearing none, there is a motion to remove, uh, candidate number 24 from tier one B, it has been properly supported, Ms. Osinski, please.
From consideration, thank you. Trustee Gainer?
Yes.
Trustee Baskett?
Yes.
Trustee Dupree?
Yes.
Trustee Mohammed?
Yes.
Trustee Schmidt?
Yes.
President Feaster?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. We are now moving down to tier one B, candidate number 26. Is there a motion as it relates to candidate number 26? Trustee Baskett?
So President Feaster, I, uh, move that we remove candidate number six, 26 from consideration.
Okay. There's a motion to remove candidate number 26 from further consideration? Is there support for, Trustee Mohammed? You support him?
Yeah.
There's support? Taking, taking my time is, uh, Trustee Gainer?
Could I ask, could I, this person wasn't at the top of my list, but could I ask for your reasons?
Sure, well, you want me to go first?
Please, thank you.
Um, so it, it was a very busy resume. And there were a lot of duties listed, but no real clear accomplishments that stood out. I did admire that the candidate started out as a BSW, I mean, we all always need, as Trustee Dupree can attend to, more social workers, um, so again, the, the accomplishments that this candidate has, you know, achieved are quite admirable, but it, it was just too busy, and there are other candidates that I could easily, you know, discern their accomplishments versus a lot of graphics and words that, again, did not stand out to me, for me.
Thank you.
And this candidate, much like the, uh, previous candidate, has all of their experience in one geographic area, uh, they do not have the diverse experiences it would seem from the, what, what we have, uh, that I kind of value, and so that's something that, uh, strikes me, uh, as, as a reason to not consider them further.
And to further support that, President Feaster, that includes his candidate's education.
Yes.
At all three levels.
It's all, yes.
Never left home.
No. Any additional discussion? Trustee Dupree?
Not really a lot, just a small comment, I will say that I do understand, um, you know, the kind of reservation, um, with someone kind of staying in the same space for a while, uh, with that being said, to me, it shows like dedication and loyalty, uh, which is something that we need in our district, especially when we're going through rough patches, um,
You can get it either way, you're right, that's very true. It's a fine needle we're trying to thread. Any additional discussion? All right, uh, there has been a motion to remove candidate number 26 from further consideration, uh, it's been supported, uh, Ms. Osinski, please.
Trustee Gainer?
Yes.
Trustee Baskett?
I'm sorry, the motion is to remove?
To remove.
Yes.
Trustee Dupree?
No.
Trustee Mohammed?
Yes.
Trustee Schmidt?
Yes.
Trustee, uh, President Feaster?
Yes.
Motion carries.
And the last candidate in tier one B, uh, number 28, uh, is there a motion for candidate number 28?
I move to remove candidate 28, uh, under consideration.
Okay. Is there support, Trustee Baskett supports that? Is there any discuss- well, let me slow down, I'm sorry. Trustee Gainer?
I, I, I took notes on everybody, and I've got very little here, which means there just was not enough strong evidence in support of this candidate.
And I know the briefing, um, from Ms. Shivers, it, um, this person has good things said about them and things, I just, the resume just doesn't have enough for me to think that they would be ready to do this job for our district.
Trustee Baskett?
I will add, I was very impressed with the resume at first, until I realized that this person is claiming to have done all of this stuff in less than two years in this position. I just couldn't see it happening.
To that point, that's why I would like to interview this person. If this person actually accomplished these things, that would be a, a blessing for our district.
Well, I would, I would challenge you, President Feaster, in looking at some of these things without revealing too much, and again, I'll consider, I don't want to give this person an hour of my time, I'll be very candid with you, but of course, if the rest of you do, I'll be here.
Can we do 45 minutes, though?
Well, as, as many things seem to be missing, it may not be an hour, I, I mean, so-
True, it may be 30 minutes.
I don't know, but-
But I, I also find that their, uh, work with equity, diversity, inclusion is very, very strong, maybe the strongest of all the candidates.
That's good.
Yes.
But we know the breadth of what it, a job of a superintendent is, I mean, my goodness.
Yes. So. Any additional discussion on candidate number 28?
The motion is to remove?
The motion on the table is to remove-
And it was Schmidt moved and seconded by?
Moved by Baskett, seconded by Schmidt. Any additional discussion? Oh, moved by Schmidt, supported by Baskett, I apologize, Ms. Osinski. Anything addition? Ms. Osinski, please.
Trustee Gainer?
Yes.
Trustee Baskett?
Yes.
Trustee Dupree?
No.
Trustee Mohammed?
No.
Trustee Schmidt?
Yes.
President Feaster?
No.
Uh, sorry, motion fails.
Okay, then.
There's a 3-3 vote.
It's, it's the equity word. This person didn't do all that.
I, I, I want, I want to talk about. Is there another motion on the table?
I'll be here. With bells on, this person better be prepared.
I will move that we, right. I, I move that we continue to consider and interview candidate number 28. Is there support for interviewing candidate number 28? Trustee Mohammed appears to support. Any discussion around that? All right, hearing none, Ms. Osinski, please.
Trustee Gainer?
No.
Trustee Baskett?
No.
Trustee Dupree?
Yes.
Trustee Mohammed?
Yes.
Trustee Schmidt?
No.
President Feaster?
Yes.
A motion fails.
Hey, so, what, what do we do in this?
Well, it's a tie, so since we only have six people.
Can I, ah, did I get that wrong?
In the spirit of-
It should have been, should have been 3-3.
It's 3-3, I, can I, okay, Trustee Gainer said no, Trustee Baskett said no, Trustee Dupree?
Yes.
Said yes, there we go. Sorry. Yeah.
Go ahead.
It's still failing, but I just didn't have it right.
I was going to say, I mean, in the spirit of positiveness, I will yield to the president, if you want to bring this person, he, this person better be ready.
And you know what, I feel the same way.
Thank you.
If this is something that you think would be an important part of this, I too would yield.
Thank you both.
You will just owe me chocolate cake at the end.
I can make that happen, I can definitely make that happen, Trustee Baskett.
I am not that nice and yucky.
Even with chocolate cake?
I have some integrity, you have to at least add ice cream, Jerry, yeah.
Do we need to vote again?
I believe one of you who voted no would need to bring the motion.
Okay, I move that we bring candidate 28, uh, in, for in, interview.
Thank you, Trustee Schmidt.
Sure.
I, I will, could I, may I support it? I will support it.
You don't have to, I can do it.
I, I, since I was in the, in the losing side on the last one, I just wanted to make sure it was appropriate. Um, any additional discussion? All right, Ms. Osinski, please.
Trustee Gainer?
No.
Trustee Baskett?
Yes.
Trustee Dupree?
Yes.
Trustee Mohammed?
Yes.
Trustee Schmidt?
Yes.
President Feaster?
Yes.
Motion carries.
And we still may have to make some cuts, I don't know where we are, listen, so he, he still may not be, uh, interviewed.
Okay, so we've got one, two, three, four.
I think, I think we have a good number.
Oh, okay.
There's seven.
Wow, that worked out nice.
Of course, if we cut more, then we'll be out earlier, but that wouldn't be fair, that would not be fair. In the interest of the children, that would not be fair.
Thank you.
So can I clarify, or should I clarify?
The numbers?
Um, yeah.
Please.
Okay, uh, to interview would be candidate one, candidate seven, candidate 10, candidate 13, candidate 16, candidate two, and candidate 28.
Correct.
Good, looks good, sounds good, Dr. Shivers?
President Feaster and the Board of Education, first of all, congratulations, um, honestly, I think you guys did an exceptional job. I know this is a lot of hard work, and your dedication and commitment showed, many of you, if not all of you, came with tablets, papers, charts, graphs, notes, um, which shows me and the community should know that you all did your homework, you were prepared, you asked excellent questions about each and every candidate, um, you have a, a phenomenal slate, so I'm excited for you all in this process. The next steps are for, um, each candidate to be contacted to confirm, um, that they are accepting the opportunity to move forward, that will be confirmed this evening, um, and then their information will be made public.
Thank you very much, Dr. Shivers.
Thank you.
Really appreciate it.
So, um, I, I did some homework, I think I can do more, so I would reach out to the rest of my members here that dig in a little bit more, so we're really ready for those interviews.
Absolutely.
Because, yeah, we have to have that tight, you know? And it'll help us decide on questions, I think the more we really, really make sure we read everything, Google their names, do all that, that it'll, it'll, we'll have a better set of questions.
And I appreciate the comment, you will get a slate of proposed questions, we have included some questions from your leadership profile, but please also consider your leadership profile and your own, um, thoughts throughout this process, um, as you look at those, those proposed questions, yes.
Question, are we allowed to contact the reference?
Pull your, um-
Say again, please?
She's, she's talking about contacting references.
I think HYA does that for us.
We will do that, yes.
Is there, I mean-
Trustee Baskett?
If I may, I, I would suggest, trustee, that if you have a question, that you would ask the reference-
Yes.
-to confer with, uh, President Feaster, who will then confer with Dr. Shivers on our behalf, as well as under trustees as well.
Okay.
Sounds perfect to me.
If at any point throughout this process you all wish to gather more information, then, um, please feel free to reach out and let, um, President Feaster know as well.
Trustee Baskett?